Yeah, it's kind of like how much work wasn't everything but sadness or something there is.
I don't believe so.
No.
We haven't already made sure.
By this, by the, because there are always. I mean, it's taken, I mean, obviously they can't change. That made them go at its time to it, but there's always, you know, because they need plenty of approval and there's TIF money to get.
He's joining us now, so. I didn't get another one. That was not another one. That was just, we just visited that one, so.
Okay. All right. I was like, oh my God, they already did the bill.
No, we are, we are already past capacity, so.
Okay, folks, are we ready? I would like to call the order to the Monday, November 6th meeting of the Manona City Council. Would the quick please call the roll?
Alder Moore.
Here.
Alder Wood.
Here.
Alder Radamacher.
Here.
Alder Bernstein.
Here.
Alder DePula.
Here.
Alder Homquist.
Here.
Mayor O'Connor.
Here. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, is, before we start, I'm going to remind everyone to speak into the, your mics tonight. Alder Bernstein was having some difficulty hearing people at our recent meetings, so, and every, anyone else listening via stream or Zoom. Okay, the first item is approval of minutes from the October 16th, October 25th, and October 30th meetings, those last two are our committee, the whole meetings when the operating budgets were presented. Is there a motion to approve those?
Helpful approval. Sorry.
Any corrections or additions on any of them? Okay, hearing none. All in favor say aye.
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 Minutes are approved. There are no appearances, there is no public hearing, there is no consent agenda. We have one item under council action items, under unfinished business, item 1A, consideration of resolution 23-10-2643 approving the 2024-2028 capital improvements program and 2024 capital borrowing. Okay, and is there a motion to approve this?
Second.
Okay, my understanding is we did have two amendments. Alder Bernstein has withdrawn the library-related amendment, so we have, we have two, both of which are pretty much technical amendments. Amendment one, description is the sewer lining street project, an amendment to move the sewer lining street project to the 2025 budget. This project is related to the Tony Watha reconstruction project that was moved to 2025. So is there a motion to approve amendment one?
Move to approve.
I'll second. Okay. Any discussion or mark, questions for Mark about this? We had several items related to that Tony Watha project and we had moved, we thought we moved all of them to 2025, but discovered this one after we presented the budget. No questions? Okay, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion is approved.
Aye.
Thank you, Rick. The other item two, an amendment to increase park truck replacement by $15,000. This was entered incorrectly in the budget document. It should have been entered as $65,000, not 50. Is there a motion to approve this amendment?
Motion to approve. Second.
Any questions for Mark? Okay, all in favor say aye.
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 Okay, is there a motion?
Aye.
Thank you, Rick. And then is there a motion, I guess we go back and a motion to approve the?
Approve as amended, yeah.
The budget as amended.
I had a.
Doug?
Just a question or comment, I guess, on the, I know we're not taking up the library strategic plan budget amendment, and I understand that's because those are usually paid for out of operating. So I'm wondering, and we can talk about it in a minute, but whether that kind of thing could be paid for with ARPA funds?
I had asked Mark that, and I think. Mark, did you?
Yeah, I mean, that's one of those things that you could make the case for, for ARPA funds.
Okay, well, well.
So we should propose an amendment at the next meeting to pay for that in operating out of the ARPA funds? Okay.
That's it.
Is that Alder Bernstein's to do, or?
Right, well, he probably should since it's library.
Okay.
He's library board. Okay, so is there a motion? Do we get a?
Yeah.
A motion in a second, right? Okay. Any further discussion on the capital budget? Okay, would the quick please call the roll?
Alder Wood.
Aye.
Alder Radamacher.
Aye.
Alder Bernstein.
Aye.
Alder DePula.
Aye.
Alder Homquist.
Aye.
Alder Moore.
Aye.
Budget is approved. Thank you. Mark, did you have anything further to say about the budget before we move on?
No, no, nothing for the cap.
Okay. We, I'm going to take the next couple of items under new business. I'm going to take a couple of items out of order, so the folks from the Bloom don't have to sit here for the next two hours. Items G and H, we're gonna, or actually item eight, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong agenda here. Item, yes, G and, G and H, we're going to take first under new business, so item G is consideration of resolution 23-11-2648 approval of certified survey map, CSM for lot combination, creating one new lot, the Bloom GDP, and this is put forth by the Plan Commission. Doug, do you want to, and the mics are over here tonight.
Good evening, everybody. I'm happy to just sort of provide a brief overview, and we've got the applicants here, and I know we're joined online as well by the, by the surveyor and civil engineering team who prepared this document. So the request here is associated with the Bloom general development plan. This is the project along Manona Drive. It's down by Spring Haven, West Dean, and Gordon Avenue. The certified survey map proposal is to consolidate all of the existing lots within a block into one. This again is associated with that development and would allow for the mixed-use development that will be considered as the next item. The certified survey map was actually reviewed during 20, in 2022, where it was a two-lot CSM that would allow for the townhome developments as well. The redesign of the project necessitated the change in this certified survey map. The plans did go through the Plan Commission on October 23rd, as well as Public Works Committee on November 1st. Conceptually, there were no challenges with this. The main details that were discussed were really the easements as they related to the parking along Spring Haven, as well as the sidewalks, public access being needed for those, as well as some hydrants and things like that that were proposed, and sort of the details of those to be worked out. So really, the Plan Commission's recommendation that was agreed upon by the Public Works Committee was that those details be ironed out with staff, with the city attorney as well, but conceptually, there were no issues with the plan, and they were both recommended by both bodies. I can certainly pass over if there are any questions.
Does anyone have any questions about that? Apparently not. Okay, thank you. Do you want to move on to the next item, H, consideration of resolution 23-11-2649, approving the Plan Commission recommendation for the Bloom PIP, also put forth by Plan Commission?
Thank you, and I will pass this over in a second, but as, as mentioned, the same site here, the 4601, 40 to 4613 Manona Drive, the proposal here is for a 98-unit mixed-use development, and there is already an approved general development plan for this that was approved in late December of 2022. The precise implementation plan is sort of the detailed document that builds upon that general development plan. The plans have changed a little, and there has been discussion about that. The, the plans now are for a four-story, one-building, 98-unit apartment building with about 7,500 square feet of commercial space on the ground floor, still to be anchored at the southeast corner by a BMO Harris bank, with associated drive-through lanes, as well as a business incubator, and a couple of other tenant amenities there as well. The PIP has been heard at two hearings of the Plan Commission, two meetings, and it was formally recommended at the October 23rd meeting. You see that, the materials were included in your packet, the recommendation as well was included in the memo. That included two findings of fact, as well as 18 conditions of approval, and suddenly I'm willing at this point to pass it over to the applicant to kind of run through, just from a high level, a little more about the project.
Sure.
We didn't vote on the CSM yet.
Oh.
Two reads.
It's two reads, yeah. Both items are two reads.
I actually was, was wondering if, I was going to ask the applicant actually if there's any advantage to taking it out, taking the CSM. I understand the PIP meant that they may not be able to do, we may not be able to do, but I was just wondering if there's any advantage for the applicant to take the CSM. It's pretty straightforward, and I know we're on a kind of tight timeframe.
Yeah, is it helpful to you to have the CSM approved tonight, or does it, otherwise we'd be approving it on the 20th?
Hi, I'm Angie, by the way. I'm the attorney for the project, so I, I don't think it matters all that much to us. We've, we've talked with Bill Cole and also Doug about being able to pull the demolition permit prior to the full building permit. So, and I think we probably, with the surveyor, have a few things and details to work through that came out of Public Works, so it's probably fine if it, you know, it doesn't need to be rushed.
Okay, we'll do it in two weeks then.
Sounds good.
Okay, did you want to talk a little bit about the changes in the project and?
Yeah, sure. So I'm Matthew Murtoes with Compass Properties, presenting the Bloom, the mixed-use development on the 4600 block of Manona Drive, as mentioned, joined by Angie Blackyer, Development Attorney, and then Dylan and James from JT Engineering on Zoom. Bloom's been in the works for the better part of two years, was initially developed with another development partner, and was planned to be an 83-unit mixed-use building, kind of broken into two separate buildings with 10 townhomes along Gordon Avenue. As we kind of went through the process, it was determined that that design wasn't financially feasible, given few, some inefficiencies and amid rising construction costs, so we worked with another architect to develop the design that's, that you've seen today, a single building, 98 units, still ground floor commercial, BMO Harris bank on the southern corner, and cafe co-working lounge anchoring the northern ground floor portion, and a, we also added a small business incubator to provide space. There's some of the space that's on the site now is kind of, was geared towards smaller businesses, so this small business incubator provides kind of lower cost and smaller space for some businesses and startups, so we're excited about that. It'll be kind of three or four small, small spaces to rent out there. The project also has several green initiatives, including solar, the electric vehicle charging, we're planning to have 100% of the underground parking EV-ready, as well as some of the surface stalls, there'll be electric bike charging stations, and a community zipcar for use both by the tenants and members of the community, and there'll also be a resident community garden in the courtyard area, as well as a dog run and some other amenity spaces. If you, we, I don't know if we want to flip through some of the renderings at all, or, very, I don't know if we have the ability to pull those up, maybe just.
Do we? Okay. Kind of. We'll just, yeah, we'll just look at.
Get a high level or just flip through?
Get a high level look at. We did approve this GDP last year. No, and I think as long as it corresponds, right, Doug?
Yes.
Which the Plan Commission decided that it did. We pretty much have to approve the PIP.
Oops.
Do we know, we have a first, we have an option, that's very shared.
So that probably might be me, what do we need to do?
They were up.
Yeah, it just came, it came up.
It just came up, and I had said, somebody just say, well, who's the, who's the, who's the?
Hold on, let me, this is which?
If you want to just locally, I can share it, if we want to hit the benefit of the zoom.
Yeah, let me see if I can actually get, I think I can make co-host. Try it again, Doug, see if you can get it to come up. Oh, one more time here, hold on. Here.
Might have.
All right, we got the, the cavalry coming here.
They can't see it all.
Yeah.
Okay, there we go. Okay.
Would you want to discuss, like, the lottery?
Uh, sure, yeah. Um, so yeah, scene here would be the Dean and Manona Drive corner with the BMO Harris on the ground floor. I guess some of the things that we worked through with Plan Commission over a few, several meetings was adding more masonry on the corners and kind of making those prominent. There we go.
There we go.
Additionally, I know at the Plan Commission's request, we added the pass-through that you see there to the right of the BMO ATM, just to break up some of the massing along Manona Drive and the kind of wood tone accents throughout the building as another feature that we added to break up the massing. Kind of keeps going down. Then you also see kind of differentiation in materials going along Manona Drive. There's kind of a mix of walk-up units on the first floor there, as well as signage for the small business incubator, and then the cafe co-working space there on the right, patio seating for the, to support the cafe as well.
Is there a passage that goes
Yeah.
down the center of the building at some point? Is it right past the bank there?
Yeah, it's the one spot right there.
Angie, you added all the belt piece too, which is just some concept that you have in you.
Correct, yeah. Um, and yeah, keep scrolling. On the backside here, we have the setback on the fourth floor with the terraces to add a little more visual differentiation of the facade and massing.
And a lot of granite, and a lot of landscape.
Right, yeah, so they, you can see here too, we're kind of replacing the townhomes. We've, have a pretty aggressive landscape plan here with burns to kind of shield any lighting from the street.
I, when you say shield lighting, you mean from?
Uh, from, yeah, the parking lot to the street.
So that the folks on the other side wouldn't have glaring lights?
Correct, yeah.
So, so every tree I see on this picture is actually a tree that's going to be planted?
Um, no, I refer to the landscape plan.
Okay.
For the actual plantings.
Yeah.
It's pretty significant though.
Very similar, yeah, that's nice.
Um, and yes, kind of the backside showing the BMO's entrance, as well as some of the solar feature on some of the covered parking there in the courtyard, and then the access to the underground parking. Just another view there from the backside with the landscape plan.
I read that there's what, 30% green space?
Yep, yep, so we're in compliance with the 30% minimum requirement.
Any questions?
Yeah, I have one.
For these folks. Teresa?
I think Rick had.
Oh, Rick? Rick?
Um, yeah, I'll go. You say they're going to be solar panels. I wondered what kind of payback you're going to get, or what kind of, how much electricity are they going to generate, and will that lower utility rates for the tenants?
Yeah, so I guess, haven't fully worked through all that, those calculations yet, but would expect it to reduce utility costs for the tenants, yes.
So you don't?
Okay, so we don't know what, how much power they're going to generate, or anything of that sort?
Uh, correct, yeah. Still have to kind of bet out how much we can fit all on the roof and figure out the calculations at that time.
You don't know the size of the array that you're going to put on the roof yet.
Correct.
Because, I mean, you know the size of the building, you know the weight limitation of the roof, what it can support.
So, so that'll help, that'll happen with MGNI as we start working on construction drawings. We haven't started the construction drawings yet because we have to get this approval before we further the design development, and MGNI requires more information before we can actually
Okay.
start doing that work and those calculations with them, but we are working with MGNI on that.
I mean, I perfectly, I understand that you cannot calculate what percentage of the overall consumption, the buildings, the, the panels are going to offset, because you have no idea how much electricity your residents are going to use, you know, they could burn up a ton of stuff, but, okay. That was just surprising to me that you wouldn't know that.
Well, we'll reach out to MGNI and see if we can get some additional information from them.
Yeah.
Before the next meeting, so we can answer the question better.
Sure.
Anyone else?
Follow that up with one more question?
Sure.
Um, will you be taking advantage of the Inflation Reduction Act as part of this project?
Um, yeah, I plan to take advantage of that act as however we can.
Okay, but again, you're, there's no, you don't have any figures for that at this point?
Correct.
Anyone else?
Is there a person on your team that's sort of dialed in to all these financial incentives and like spearheading the sustainability aspect, the energy-saving aspect? I, it's not going to, it's not a make or break, you know, question from me, but I, I guess I'm just taken by surprise that, in the calculation of all the costs that you have to consider before you enter into such a big endeavor, that you, I don't do what you do for a living. I, I know you're the experts, it's just, I'm being, anyway, I'll, I'll move on to my next question, and I'm just sitting here kind of wondering if I should just not say it at all. I, I also was really happy to see that there was a pass-through, because I know that in past designs, there were the two buildings, and that really made it kind of nice for flow. Maybe it's just me and my imagination. I noticed the pass-through is right by an ATM. First thing that comes to mind is I'm taking money out late at night, and there's somebody hiding in the pass-through. That, that's, I'm just, it's a, I'm, I don't, I wonder what sort of security features would be added, lighting, cameras. As a woman, I think that's something that's not unreasonable to imagine.
Doug?
I, that was something definitely raised by staff during the DIP process. The lighting plan that they have, they were very intentional about it being very well illuminated, and the, I think there is some privacy concern through the bank, but there's some offices on that side, that side is a little more private.
Okay.
But there is glass on the other side, I believe, in the center, where there's, there'll be sort of light and
Nice.
eyes and people there as well, so there shouldn't be any concern about that from a, from a safety.
Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else? Okay, well, I think that's everything we had, and we'll see you back in two weeks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to move back to the beginning of the new business section of the agenda, which is item 2A, consideration of resolution 23-11-2650, adopting the 2024 operating budget and establishing a tax levy. We won't be voting on this till next time. We have quite a few of the staff members are here. If you have questions for anyone about their budgets, and we do.
Yeah, Mary, my step, I did send, just if everybody could check their emails quick. I just emailed, there's two budget, I'm sorry, I did earlier, it was gone. There's two budget amendments.
Oh, there are?
Yes.
Oh, are those Doug's?
Yeah. Sent today, so I just sent them to everybody here within the last five, 10 minutes. I don't know if you want to go through those. Budget amendments?
Yeah, I was going to talk about those a little bit. Alder Wood is interested in at least exploring, possibly doing something else. I'm just trying to bring this up here. Rather than putting the solid waste collection on the tax, on the tax rolls a separate fee. So he brought up a couple of different ideas, and how, how did you want to approach this? Doug, did you want to explain it?
Yeah, sure, yeah, I can give it a shot.
Mark did both, send just both amendments to you right now. I know Neil has some thoughts about it as well, so Doug, if you want to.
Yeah, um, so it was basically wanted us to discuss potential alternatives to establishing the garbage and recycling fee, kind of looking at the, if, I think we're only doing it this year because we have a hole in the budget. If we didn't have that hole, we wouldn't, you know, this, we wouldn't be talking about, about a garbage fee. So my concern is that, you know, this may, this, our situation hopefully will change for the better after the referendum, and so I wonder if we're making what will become a permanent change based on a one-year exigent circumstances, so. The first thing that I suggested was applying fund balance to cover, and Mark calculated it out, it would be $174,000 basically that would need to be transferred from the fund balance, the general fund balance, to cover the hole. I know that the, so. I know that the, so. Oh, I see. The reason it's smaller, I think, is because, I don't, Mark maybe could explain it, but there, I know if you're, when you establish the garbage and recycling fee, you'd lose some other, some ability to raise.
I think we have to remove the amount that it was in, what, 2013 or something from the tax levy? Is that the?
Yeah, so basically what happens, if you're looking like, well, this number doesn't make sense, it's because when you take the money off the tax roll, you have to reduce it to 2013, so you had that swing of 200-some thousand, and now you don't have to lose, so that goes back into your levy, so this is your, your basic difference that would have been 174,000, you were short.
Yeah. And so the reason I, you know, started looking at this was, we do have the policy to have at least a 20% balance in our, in the general fund balance, so that's 20%, is 20% of the general fund budget that's on page five in the book. At the end, the estimated year-end amount will be 25.4% right now, which is $394,997 over the 20%, so we could, we could use that much, 395,000 essentially, if we wanted to, and still be at 20%. So this would take about, not quite half of that, about 40%, 174,000 to use for this one year. Obviously, this would not be sustainable, like, we can't, this isn't a one-time cost. We're going to continue to have the cost, so, you know, if the referendum weren't to pass, then I think certainly we'd be looking at a garbage and recycling fee and probably a wheel tax too, if, you know, to try to find ways to make up revenue before we start cutting things. So that's just, you know, I, I think it's a reasonable, it's actually, I was surprised, it was, I think it's a more reasonable alternative than I thought it would be, whether it's, you know, so, there's really not a whole lot more to say about it than that. The second one was a little more, well, basically it was proposing to use a wheel tax in. The second one was a little more, well, basically it was proposing to use a wheel tax instead of the garbage and recycling fee to, to cover that shortfall. The number that I have that, that's shown in the budget amendment that Mark just sent was that it would raise, a wheel tax of $28 would raise, which is the same as Madison, would raise a hundred and ninety thousand, let's see, yeah.
I rounded up to a hundred and ninety thousand.
Yeah, okay.
So that number I had in there, I think I showed the formula, six thousand eight hundred, that's a hard number I received last year from the DOT when I called them. I didn't get the card number for this year. So that was a number of vehicles that are, that meet the requirement, if you deal a wheel tax to meet, that was what we had able to register. So that's six, six thousand eight hundred is, I mean, I don't know how much is going to change from that number, so that's the number I used in the calculation.
Okay. And that, that would actually leave us fifteen thousand seven sixty-three under the levy limit.
Correct.
So Mark, our shortfall, just to confirm, is a hundred and seventy-four thousand two-hundred-and-thirty-seven?
Yes.
Is that right? Okay.
And then I actually had a third one that Mark didn't, I wasn't very clear in the way I explained it, so we didn't put it in, but it was essentially to increase, if you look on page seventeen, increase the estimated, or the budgeted revenue from interest income. It was, we got, we're estimating to get three-hundred thousand from that this year. We budgeted a hundred and twenty this year. The twenty-four budget is two-eleven. That amendment would increase the amount that we would use out of, or in, would increase the estimated income. So increase our revenues, basically saying, yes, we're going to still get this year like two-hundred-and-fifty thousand in that, which I think is a pretty safe bet for-
Yeah, for one more year, I believe so.
I think, Neil, do you want to address a few, is that everything you had to say there?
Right, well, so the other, if, if we wanted to go, if we wanted to do that, that could also affect then the revenue, the increased revenue that we would expect to get from interest income could be applied to the first two amendments and reduce how much we would need to take out of fund balance.
Okay, that's, I see what you're meaning.
And we aren't voting on any of these things tonight, we're just talking about them.
Yeah.
Different things to consider. And Neil, you had some thoughts about, I don't know, I brought your email with you.
Yep, is it just, I think just a couple of comments. Certainly was, I think, a little hesitant to, in terms of using fund balance, simply knowing just the number of things we've had to pay for, for facility repairs and other things this past year.
That we hadn't planned for.
That we had not planned for. And so we kind of see that as a little bit of a trend right now, and certainly just to be conservative, you know, certainly would, you know, you know, a little hesitant to commit fund balance, knowing that we're probably still in that same situation. I know we have H V A C issues with this building, I think with City Hall, with some roof issues with, perhaps with the library. There's other couple of things that are kind of floating around out there that we're, we're trying to, hopefully not going to have to make any improvements on, but having some funds available in case we do need to do those is certainly something I think would be prudent. So certainly within, within reason, there's obviously, that's what that fund balance is for, and I agree, Alder, certainly it is, you have that flexibility to stay within your own financial policy, so absolutely there is some, you know, that's what the fund balance is there for, I would say. I think the other one in terms of interest income, you know, I'm a little more cautious just knowing the, how the world's going today in terms of, you know, what could happen to interest rates, probably going to be okay in, in the future, I think conservatively, but just knowing just how uncertain the economy is right now. I don't know how, how confident I am in those things staying in that realm going forward. I know Mark seems, is certainly comfortable, I think probably a little bit more than I am in terms of where, where those rates may go in the near future. So again, just kind of being a little bit, a little, a little conservative, I guess, on those two revenue streams. And I think certainly in terms of, I think we've stated previously that the, moving the, moving the recycling in order to, to more of a fee, I think is, is more of a standard practice, certainly here in the Dane County region. It is, I, in terms of the question of equitability, I think in fairness, I think would come up. I think in terms of, you know, equitable is maybe not the, the right word. I think, I think there's certainly an, an advantage to residents by having it on the tax levy because of the commercial industrial tax base taking on a certain share of that as part of the overall levy. And in terms of, you know, is, is another user fees, fees are basically charged to those individuals who are actually using the service. So it is often, more often considered to be kind of more of a direct allocation of costs to the actual user in this case. So in terms of, of that, just wanted to kind of provide that clarification, I guess, on that. So certainly, and again, in terms of the wheel tax itself, probably one of the more, the, I'd say probably one of the more least popular, I think, taxes that are out there in terms of the municipal quiver going out there to do that. Not sure how, there is some question, I think, from wheel tax in terms of, you know, identifying who has vehicles. Now, without having hard data on this, you know, we've heard, you know, some people have stated that, you know, lower-income families could be more negatively impacted by this. If they have multiple people in the household who are working, most likely they have a car in order for them to get to work, so they, they may actually be more likely to have multiple vehicles in the household and could, would be, potentially be negatively impacted by a wheel tax. Again, that's, that's kind of speculation at this point, and I don't have hard evidence on that, but have heard that argument used in other communities, there was a concern with doing that. Contrary, and some people would say, oh, the wealthier families have their, they've got their extra car, or their, their weekend car, they're, you know, they're, they're to do that, but I think there is, is something to be said for if it's a lower-income household and multiple people need to be working if they don't have alternative transportation, most likely they are each having their own vehicle. So there's a possibility that, that for those households, this could become a little bit more of a burden. So.
So, thank you. And so I don't know if anyone had, had anything else they want to add, or some suggestions for Alder Wood? It sounds like if you did want to make a change, you could certainly even do a combination of these amendments.
Yeah.
Alden Moore?
I, I'd ask one question if I could.
Okay.
Doug? What, what is it about the fee that you're trying to avoid here? What's the goal that you're trying to achieve by switching it off from a, from a fee?
Because I, I guess I view, you know, garbage collection as the, sort of one of the fundamental services that city government provides. Kind of like, you know, it's, it's right up, you know, you've got police and fire, getting the garbage picked up, having streets that you can drive on, having water utilities that work. So, yeah, that's-
Alden Moore?
Yeah, I would, I would-
And you feel a fee?
Rick, I think Alder, Alder Moore has a question.
Well, if I could just finish, maybe one, I mean, I think they're both, both the wheel tax and the garbage fee are more regressive taxes than the property tax.
Alden Moore?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I, you know, I certainly appreciate Alder Wood's amendment for exactly the reason that he just stated. I am not a big fan of fees, I mean, in the same way that, you know, there's been a, there's been an effort to curb, you know, baggage fees and excess fees and all these fees on a, on, you know, by corporate America. I just, I, I feel like, you know, the garbage is one of those core, garbage and recycling is one of those core things, and so, like streets, as, as Alder Wood just said, like streets, like public safety, like our parks. So, so I, I certainly understand the reason behind the amendment, as much as I appreciate, and again, it's not like we're necessarily saying that we wouldn't have to do this a year from now, or, or that we might eventually have to go that route, but, but I certainly appreciate, and, and I'm not as concerned about the interest, interest suggestion either. Not a big, definitely not a big fan of the wheel tax, so.
Anyone else? Doug?
One last comment, then, I guess I'm a little concerned that if we do go forward with the garbage fee or a wheel tax this year, but right before we're going out to referendum, are people going to say, we just, you just asked us for more, you know, money for garbage collection, now you're, you know?
Yeah. Although on the other hand, it may be a good demonstration of why we really need more funding.
Right, that's true.
That we had to resort to that.
I think probably the former, I mean, I, I think the first would probably apply. I mean, I can just, I'm just trying to put myself in the shoes of most residents, and if I got my tax bill and then all of a sudden they were tagging on this fee, and then all of a sudden you're coming out, I would feel like, what's going on over there?
Yeah. Well, we have a lot of communicating to do next year about our financial situation here and how we really need that operating referendum to pass.
So if I could just summarize?
Sure.
So we have, so the options here are, every household is charged the same amount of money for recycling and, and garbage collection.
Mm-hmm.
That was option A that we've already talked about. Then Alder Moore, or Alder Wood's amendments would be sort of like, every household is still charged some, but not as much, because part of that cost would be offset with fund balance?
No, no.
No, we also have commercial property owners paying.
So we would share the-
Yeah, this one, you said, the, you said pay $50, you pay like $90.
Well, I understand-
They would be the contributors.
I understand that that's how it's working currently. I didn't, I'm not including the current model in my list of options. So the new options that we're talking about is moving away from the current model to every household pays the same amount for garbage and recycling. That was what we had discussed already. And then Alder Wood's amendment would be every household still is charged, but not as much, because we're offsetting part of the cost.
No, no, the fund balance, there's enough there now, I think we're talking, well, by a hundred and seventy-four thousand, so, I mean, there's more than enough there and leave us well above the 20% to cover that entire hole, that, to fill that hundred and seventy-four thousand dollar hole.
But the garbage cost is actually more than a hundred and seventy-four thousand, isn't it? Isn't it four hundred thousand, Mark?
To, to-
It is, but then you got to remember, we had, because we were taking it off, you have to reduce your base to 2013 amounts, was 200,000 less. So the net effect is a hundred and seventy-four thousand is a net effect. But, yeah, I mean, so once you redo it, it goes up to about 400,000 overall for, for your recycling.
So if we don't do the fee, then does that increase the amount of money we need to come up with for the shortfall?
No, decrease the-
No. Right.
Right.
So the shortfall is what your fund balance plug number is, the 174.
Right, okay.
Because if we do the, the garbage fee, then we have to take out that amount that Mark talked about.
Yeah, and that's the one positive by using the fund balance. If you look at a positive one, if you look at a pros and cons, there is a pro, so you don't have to reduce your base, you're not reducing your base that way. So that is something, that happens too. So we're, we had to reduce our base by 200,000. Using a fund balance, do not reduce your base.
Okay.
So true, so the answer to your question is there is no charge to the residents. What, what essentially happened is the garbage and recycling will be folded back into the budget like any other city service, and payment for it would be coming out of the fund balance. So the residents wouldn't see anything on their bill.
Okay.
Correct.
But as I understand it, this garbage collection fee may not be 380, might be more like 340 in force, in the years going forward. Correct?
Mark?
Well, you'd have to fill a gap with 174,000 as your gap.
No, that's for this year, but for-
Even next year, it's because you have your property tax number in and out, so your gap would be still 174. So you're starting 174,000 in the hole, is what ends up happening next year.
Yeah, oh, okay.
So that's your, your hole, and so, once we get our budget for '25, we can start in, but it'd be the fund balance number used, which is 174,000. So, yeah.
We're gonna, we're gonna face a similar fee in '25, '26, '27.
I think what Doug Wood is talking about is we could work that into the referendum, so that you wouldn't have to do that. I assume, I guess I should speak for Doug, but I thought, I would think that'd be the thought process.
Correct.
Yep.
Okay. The referendum's going to make all the difference into what we're, we end up having to do next year. This is just a stopgap.
Yeah.
In terms of what you're talking about.
Yeah, I mean, this is, this is to fill the hole for, for one year and then see what happens with the referendum.
So you have three choices, basically, that Doug's presenting, right? The wheel tax, the, using the fund balance, or increasing the amount of income from the-
Yeah, I would, I mean, the-
Interest income.
The interest income thing is, that's more of an add-on, or, I mean, it's kind of a standalone thing. Obviously, if we, if we approve, you know, we're just estimating how much revenue we would get from interest. And if we change that to a higher number than to make the, the budget balance, we don't need, we wouldn't need as much out of fund balance, but-
Right.
True, yeah.
Right.
Yeah. But I only, I should say, I mean, I didn't send these to Mark until Friday afternoon, so it really hasn't been much time to-
Yeah.
-to digest it, so.
Well, we have two weeks. People have other ways they want to handle it. Brian?
And Mark's right, I have his wrong, but if we chose to fill the hole with fund balance and the revenue from interest happened to be higher than we projected currently, that would actually end up folding into our fund balance in the future, so.
True.
Even if we fill the hole with fund balance and don't artificially, or, don't anticipate more revenue, but we actually realize more revenue, it just folds back into the fund base. Right, I mean, that, that's how the fund balance grows.
Yeah, that's true.
Correct.
Right, yeah, so your basic budget for that loss and plus or minus is what you really, so if you had 50,000 extra, you only use 125,000 or 50. So, yeah, you're going to have a loss, but, yeah, but your shorter use of the fund balance number will be as big.
Yeah. I mean, I would say, I, I agree with the, the, the fee for garbage and recycling as well as wheel tax. Those are going to be real items on the table unless a referendum passes, and although we can talk all we want about who that's going to impact, it's going to be a real serious question this time next year if, if there isn't a change. Like, I don't think it will be one or the other, it's going to be both plus something else, so.
Right.
Yeah.
I'm okay filling the hole with fund balance for this year, but the other two are absolutely on the table, and we're going to need more than that.
Right, if, if it doesn't pass, right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Do you have, anyone else have any questions about anything else for any of the staff? Any of the items in the operating budget?
I, I think I did.
Doug?
Maybe this was actually, so I had asked Dan today about the REACH 64, the REACH 64 project, that, that's in capital, right?
Yeah.
Okay, never mind.
Two ways.
I was just, I think I missed a meeting and then apparently there's a real possibility we're not going to use Maywood Park for the undergrounds. we're not gonna use Maywood Park for the underground stormwater storage. And I was just, wanted to clarify that with Dan, and he did. It sounds like that's probably the way it's going, but may, you know, we'll see.
We would say it may would for the very last project if we did.
Yeah.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions about the operating budget? Well, if you have them, bring them next time, that's when we'll be considering it. And if you have any other budget amendments, send them to Mark. Again, if you're adding to the spending, you have to figure out a way to cover it, because we're at a break-even point here. Well, we're not at a break-even point, that's part of it, so. Okay. I'm gonna move on, then, if there's nothing else, to item two B. There's a, you'll notice an H next to that item, it's supposed to be an asterisk, actually, start for immediate approval, consideration of resolution twenty-three dash eleven dash twenty-six fifty-one, requesting exemption from Dane County Library Tax. This is put forth by the library director. Is there motion to take this out of order?
Motion to take it out of order.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Is there motion to approve this?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, and I see Ryan isn't here, but this is, this comes before us every year, and it's just a requirement that we have to approve this, so that the city is not taxed by Dane County Library Service. That's a tax that every community that doesn't have a library pays. And we have to every year go through this process of saying that we don't wanna be taxed, because we provide our own.
Mayor?
Actually, Ryan is here.
Is that correct? Ryan, you are here? Okay, I'm sorry. Okay.
Oh, sorry, I mean, you summarized it honestly probably better than I would have, but yeah, this is done every year.
I'm sorry, I didn't recognize the building as you.
Yeah, no, apologies. But yeah, so this is, this is every year, just making sure that we are doing what we need to do to be exempted from this. Those municipalities that don't do this, there then, there's an additional tax that goes towards the Dane County Libraries, that those tax dollars are all collected and distributed to the libraries that are exempt for helping service those other communities.
And I think there's usually a deadline date, isn't there, that you have to turn this in by?
That is correct. Yep, that is correct.
Which is why it's start for immediate approval. Doug, did you have a question?
And I just noticed, and this may be because we do it every year, but in the last whereas clause, it refers to the City of Manona will appropriate in twenty-twenty, and will expend in twenty-twenty-one an amount in excess of the calculated, of that calculated above and support its library. I'm thinking maybe those.
That's a good catch.
Should be updated.
Yeah, apologies, that's a typo from the document that I received from Dane County that I did not catch, but that should just be for the upcoming year.
So appropriating it in twenty-three and spending it in twenty-four.
Correct.
Okay.
Anyone else? Okay, if there are no further questions, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is consideration of resolution twenty-three dash eleven dash twenty-six forty-six, approval of a three-year proposal from Barnes Incorporated for brush collection services, and this is put forth by the Public Works Committee. Dan?
Thank you, Mayor. In your packet, you have for the first reading tonight, a three-year contract proposal to extend the curbside shopping program currently provided by Barnes. We've had them the past three years, and the customer service we've experienced has been, how we consider, outstanding. We've had little to no complaints for their service, and if there's a missed pile, they're always willing to go back and collect it, no questions asked. The proposal's for another three years. It covers curbside shipping, Christmas tree collection every year, assistance with storm damage cleanup if we need it, and we also incorporated in the proposal other items that have in the past been in the operating budget, but for contract deficiencies, we've included them with this contract. You'll see them on, I believe, page three of the Barnes proposal. Every year, we do certain intersections on Manona Drive for spring cleanup. We also have City Hall in there, two locations, and like I said in the past, those have, those dollars have been allocated in the budget, but just not going forward in Barnes' contract, they're in there for the next go-around, so. Be more than happy to answer any questions if you have.
Does anyone have any questions? Doug?
Yeah, where is the brush collection in the budget?
It appears in the forestry budget and the stormwater budget, split fifty each way. All right.
Anyone else have any questions?
I thought it was interesting, I thought it was interesting to see the price of Christmas tree collection. That was kind of surprising, but what was it, a hundred and five dollars per person per hour that we pay?
A hundred and five bucks an hour per.
Per person.
I think they have two staff that come and do it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Anyone?
I agree with Alder Wood wholeheartedly, that having my garbage and recycling picked up is a service I would expect to pay for, but I always think it's kind of a bonus that people get their Christmas trees picked up. Maybe it's not, maybe it's not a bonus, maybe, but what does that come to? Do you have any thought, or off the top of your head, is that?
I think it comes to around forty-five hundred bucks.
Okay, so it's not that, okay, all right.
It, I guess it depends on whoever gets a real tree, and.
Sure, exactly. Yeah.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Next, item D, convening closed session under Wisconsin Statute, section nineteen point eight-five, print one, print E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require closed session. This involves the Bray Architects contract, and firefighters local three-eleven, and Wisconsin Professional Police Association bargaining. Is there motion to go into closed session?
Moved.
Second.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alder Radamacher?
Aye.
Alder Bernstein?
Aye.
Alder DePula?
Aye.
Alder Holmquist?
Aye.
Alder Moore?
Aye.
Alder Wood?
Aye.
Okay, we are in closed session, and. And we have one remaining item on the agenda, which is consideration of resolution twenty-three dash eleven dash twenty-six forty-seven, approving a contract with Bray Architects for civic facility architecture and design services, put forth by the city administrator, and this is started for immediate approval. Is there motion to take this out of order?
Motion to take it out of order.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Is there motion to approve?
We've moved to approve with the provision that the city administrator, and the city administrator has authority to adjust the schedule of work set forth in one point, one point four of the document.
Second.
Is there a second? Any questions or discussion? Teresa, did you have something? No further questions, we do have Mr. Wolford for Bray on the, he's on, in the Zoom. Okay, if not, then, Eileen, would you call?
Alder Bernstein?
Aye.
Alder DePula?
Aye.
Alder Holmquist?
Aye.
Alder Moore?
Aye.
Alder Wood?
Aye.
Alder Radamacher?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you all. Another giant step. We have already covered items G and H, so I'm gonna move on to reports of committees, commissions, et cetera. First, are there any updates or discussion on diversity, equity, and inclusion efforts?
Just a reminder that on November thirtieth, gosh, I believe it was seven o'clock?
That sounds.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's embarrassing. Here in the library, I could look at my own calendar. The DEIB report implementation.
I have six, actually.
Thank you.
But I also have.
I can look that up. We're going to be having our community listening session, where folks can come and learn about the three focus areas that this body is digging into, and coming up with some concrete plans for moving those forward. And that's in this room of the library on November thirtieth, and it is. My apologies, I don't have the time on my calendar.
I think it's six.
Six o'clock.
Because I remember making a note the other day about it, but we can confirm that.
Yeah.
We have one more meeting before then. Anyone else?
Sorry, I just have a question about that. Is Nehemiah part of it? Like, I haven't heard anything about Nehemiah.
Yes, they'll be there as well to facilitate.
Even at all the meetings, and.
Yeah.
Does anyone else have anything to add about diversity and inclusion?
Just a couple of quick notes, Mayor. Did complete the tribal nations course, I had signed up for, I previously reported on, that was, had my fourth and final class on that here last week. Again, very, pretty fascinating, probably something that needs at least probably a couple semesters worth of discussion, and these guys did it in four three-hour classes, so it was pretty impressive. Again, very sobering, but, but very practical applications, I think, so that some lessons I think we can hopefully carry forward in some of our own interactions. We are currently checking on, following up, we had a request about our Ho-Chunk Nation flags. We are following up on that and making sure that I think our, we're missing our one at City Hall, and I think our two at the library and the senior center have seen better days. We had an order in for them, I think they sent us larger ones than we needed for our flag poles, so where they would have been bigger than the American flag, which presenting some flag code issues. So we have gone back, and our maintenance staff is kind of going back and working on trying to get that taken care of and resolved there. I think just one last other note, we have our RFP for Assessment Services is out on the street right now. It's the first time we've incorporated language requiring the, basically the contractor, the selected contractor to provide reports in Spanish at the city's request. So that is a requirement right, listed right in the RFP, so we'll see exactly what, hopefully they're able to accommodate that request. We think that could be standard language going forward in other RFPs if this one is successful, so. No other report, Mayor.
Okay. Anyone else? Anybody have anything to update or discuss on sustainability efforts? Nancy?
Yeah, I just wrote, actually, to Alder Radamacher recently to report that the three developments, that, two of which are, one of which we have a shovel and a ground on, which is, say, North Point on Broadway, and Manona Garden Restaurant, also on Broadway, and East Broadway, and now with Bloom, those three developments represent, no question, both, all three of them are major leaps forward in terms of sustainability, with gratitude not only to the developers, but to the plan commission, that's really worked, with the developers on those elements, recognizing the city's commitment there, and I'm just, you know, really proud of that fact. North Point's going for a student certification, and will include solar, and they'll be having, they'll have EV stations as well, and geothermal will be happening in the Manona Garden projects, Besa, and as well as solar, and again, I think he's doing this up in community car, and so I reached out to Alder Radamacher and said, you know, I think these are, and certainly you heard tonight from the Bloom project, that they, they have some major things going on in their development as well, so I just think that, and the fact that we have a number of employers in Manona that, that have done major installs of solar, you know, I, it all ties back to the resolution that we passed several years ago for a hundred percent clean energy, and our, and our targets there, which, because our targets were not only just for the city and the municipality, but also for our community, and, you know, I think it's terrific that the residents, the number of residents that have put solar, and the number of businesses that are doing solar, and now the number of new developments going in, represent, I think, some pretty major leaps forward.
Alder Moore, would you like me to read a few more details from the email that you sent? I was so dialed into putting that in the newsletter, I didn't even think about bringing it up here for the people that might be. But some of the points that you shared with me, Besa, which is the current Manona Gardens, geothermal, solar, EV charging stations for cars, EV charging stations possibly for bicycles, and zip slash community car.
Yeah.
The new dental office, EV for cars, they're roughing in for solar that may go in in a future point in time. North Point, they're building to Wisconsin Green Building Standards, Energy Star new construction slash the indoor, EPA indoor AirPlus certifications, and rooftop solar. And then finally, the Bloom, we've got solar EV stations for cars, and the whole garage is being roughed in for EV, zip community cars, and they're moving toward a certification, a LEED certification. So, a lot of amazing work going on. Thank you for reminding me that. Like I said, I was so thinking about the newsletter, I didn't even think to bring it up here.
Sure. Anyone else?
I just wanna circle back on DEIB, it is six o'clock on November thirtieth, so thank you.
I just wanted to say about the sustainability, this is sort of, I guess it's perfectly related. Alder Radamacher and I, and Brad Brune of the Public Works Department, all went to a meeting with the Dane County Sustainability Group at the new McFarland Public Safety Building, and I've heard Kathy Kuhn speak a couple of times now about everything available from the federal government, and it's through like twenty thirty-two, and there's a lot of money out there, and I really, you know, we're really planning on taking advantage of that in this new building. But then they also did a tour of their building, and it was, it's really nice. It's not, it's functional, it's, it's not, nothing over the top, but I think, and I've also toured the Mount Hora building, I think both are designed by Bray, and there's definitely some similarities there. Then we went up on the roof and looked at solar panels and that kind of thing. So it was an interesting tour, and we'll see what they come up with here. Of course, we don't have a flat space out in the cornfield for them to build in that either, but we'll see.
One thing that impressed me.
Probably won't sink.
Huh?
It probably won't sink.
Yeah, well, yeah. Hopefully, it won't sink well either, yeah.
One thing that I was impressed about with the fire station was just such the intentional design toward building community gathering spaces. It just felt like very family, you know, big, big fluffy chairs around, a TV set, you know, big table for eating together, you know, just, it was really nice.
And the police section was like that.
Yeah.
Different things, but it definitely was, yeah, it was impressive.
Yeah.
Moving on to committee reports, Alder DePula.
Let's see, Public Works met, and, you know, the ongoing thing that we were talking about was potential parking permits and addressing parking issues in the areas around the high school. That ended up getting, well, once we started talking about enforcement, it was no longer the purview of Public Works Committee, so that's gonna move on to Public Safety. That's really the only thing of note from this past month.
Alder Holmquist?
No report.
Alder Moore?
There is a transit meeting on Wednesday at six PM, where we'll be discussing, further discussing our movement as it relates to our bus transit here in Manona, and that's, as always, at City Hall Conference Room.
And do you anticipate making a decision?
We do anticipate making a decision.
Okay. Alder Wood?
No report.
Alder Radamacher?
Same here, no report. We have meetings coming up this week that maybe you report next week.
And Alder Bernstein?
Just a couple FYIs about the library. Ryan talked about unusual collections. They do now have a collection of Pleasant Company dolls, so if you have a reading daughter or son, my son used to like them a lot, check them out at the library. Also, coming to the library is some kind of form of checking out.
Also, coming to the library is some kind of form of checking out American Players Theater tickets. So I'm not quite sure how that's going to work, but if you do like to go to the theater out there near Spring Green, it might be an opportunity for you. And I don't know if other people know about the streaming platform Canopy. If you want something other than the usual fare from Netflix or Prime Video, Canopy, you can log in using your library card. And I saw some great, great films that you're not going to see any other platform that I know of. Saw a great film called Thousand Pieces of Gold. 1991, set on the frontier in 1880s, but it really talked a lot about the Chinese population in the Gold Front and how they were treated. But it was, it was a very, it was based on a true story and I really recommend it. And a very young Chris Cooper in it. So if you're a fan of him or you just like old westerns, you might try out Canopy.
Thank you.
That's my report.
That's Canopy with a K.
Canopy with a K.
Good to know.
It's, Eric did some good stuff on it.
Alder Bernstein, that sounds like a great newsletter submission.
It does.
Like, there's a lot of, I mean, I, I didn't know about Canopy. A lot of other people may not know either. That'd be great.
And now we're getting into winter.
Let's get it out there. Yeah, let people know about that wonderful service.
People don't know about the tools you can check out either.
Right.
Yeah.
What? Can you use tools to check out?
And the newsletter items are due on Friday, by the way.
Yep, yep.
Chief McMullin?
I have nothing to say to you. I'm going to defer to.
Can I ask you, just ask you a question that came up when we were cleaning our garage today? But other people may find of, of interest. I have an electric bike. Where would you suggest keeping, I remove the battery during the winter. Where would you suggest I keep it?
As long as you don't leave a plug in, you can start it.
Okay. Just heard another thing about a fire in a plane. Chief Chaney was lots of news.
No, I don't. I'd like you to keep your bike locked up, please.
It's hanging from the ceiling.
Okay, it's perfect. We have retrieved a couple of recovered stolen bicycles and those powered bicycles are quite hefty, but that truck will come in handy here soon. So thank you all.
When are you getting that, 2027?
Four Hall. I, I just read an article that Ford just opened up ordering for fleet for the UP 150s for next year. So our wonderful detective who also serves as our new fleet coordinator is going to be calling our contract provider. So I don't know if I missed this because I stepped out of the room, but I just want to acknowledge the upcoming Veterans Day, the Saturday. As you all know, you have several veterans that, that work for the city. So they served abroad, many of them. And they're currently serving you all. We currently in the police department have an officer who is abroad serving. And so just want to give special acknowledgement to past and current service women and men risk their lives for us every day. So thank you. And then I'm here for questions. It's been a busy couple of weeks, very productive. I should say thank you to what I would consider a good amount of support and phone calls and emails that I've received from both Manona residents and Madison residents as well for the work that your officers have done in the past couple of weeks. A couple of those incidents have caught attention as they should, but you probably saw me in one or two news releases or media interviews for a couple of incidents. And I, I just think it's important that I share those. Sometimes I get friendly reminders from my boss to make sure I email all of you. So I apologize when things get busy that I forget to hit send on an email or two. Don't be shy. Get ahold of me if you have any questions or concerns. And the same goes with the public. You know, I did receive a couple of general inquiries about, hey, I'm just curious as to what the, the incident in Milwaukee Street and why Manona officers were out there and having to answer those questions for the public. I try to make that as clear as I can when I put out these releases, but I, I figure that I can't put out novels when I send out information. And I just refer people to, to contact me in the police department if you have any questions. We got a wonderful bouquet of flowers today by a Manona resident who wished to express her appreciation for the work that the officers are doing. And that just matches the dozens and dozens of calls and emails and expressions of support. Now, not without criticism, of course, and as, you know, we wield a lot of power, your, your police officers do and law enforcement we do, that you authorize us to have. So I welcome the, the questions and I welcome sort of making sure you keep us on our toes and keeping us in check. That's, that's what you're here for and that's what my job is to do, is to make sure I hold the officers accountable and this police department accountable and you all need to hold me accountable. We're doing our job out there, one call at a time. And as I referenced in the latest press release, these officers, this is the, the most recent case, the Saturday morning case, in which actually this officer back here was doing OWI and speed enforcement on the Belt Line. And he caught somebody going 89 miles an hour and of course unfortunately would not stop. That ended up in an apprehension and that was, it turns out, two guns. We discovered another gun. That we got off the streets. But on my way in today, I, I saw a report that a Madison officer called out a vehicle traveling in our direction on the Belt Line going 120 miles an hour. 120 miles an hour. So if you know anybody with a nice sports car McLaren. There aren't too many of those in this area.
There's one in Manona.
Please, please advise and, and you can submit your tips online or me directly. We will follow up. So we have a description and the type of car, but that's Madison giving us a heads up that there was a car coming towards us going 120.
What time of day was that?
This was this evening.
Yeah, so it's not, yeah.
So what, so what do you do? You get the phone call, there's a speeding car coming your way, then what?
If we're in position, which likely weren't. One of your, two of your officers are on a mental health call, a possible conveyance to, to, to Manona Mental Health. And then the other car was not in position. So, and it's just so happy we had three tonight because the sergeant's working the shift tonight.
Yeah.
What we typically do, we try to get ahead of it, turn our lights on early, hoping that they would slow down and eventually, you know, realize that we caught them, pull over and ask for, you know, compliance, but you don't equip us with vehicles that can keep up to the plan.
Well, we were wondering about.
Next year's budget, yeah.
Thinking about getting the Smoggy and the Bandit replica?
Oh, sure.
I will say, as somebody who's been here a bit, I was very, you know, very involved as I think, you know, Doug and Mary were obviously too, and I think you were on the council, when we even bought the tire deflating, what do you call it?
Yeah, strip deflation device.
Strips, right? It was a big discussion.
It's a big deal.
And I can't, and the number of times now that I'm seeing reports from you guys when they've been deployed and I think, what the hell were we thinking? We shouldn't have just.
New technology and you didn't know.
Right.
That's true though, it was a big deal.
I have, I was out there this weekend, this, last Thursday, deploying tire deflation devices on a vehicle trying to elude our officers. I missed. I mean, I'm out of practice, but the whole goal, as you know, is to slow the vehicle down enough that we can render that incident safe. And they, Madison, God bless them, they help us out. And what they do mainly, because they don't pursue, is, well, they do. They do pursue, but only for certain situations. They deploy tire deflation devices for us. I'm surprised we don't get a bill. But they do, they do. We're all team players out there.
You're helping them.
We're helping them. And, and that's what I've said to a couple of Madison residents who've called and talked to me and, and, you know, we're, we're not siloed. The persons who commit these acts don't think in terms of jurisdiction. And we can't think in terms of jurisdiction as it relates to how we keep this community safe, so.
Now, the real question is how do we get Jaco on a reality TV show?
He's getting his views already, yeah, exactly.
I love that dog.
Just, I know Chief probably has brought this up before, but the regional efforts that he leads on a monthly basis, if you kind of roll by City Hall on a particular Wednesday and you see the, the lot full of different police vehicles from all over Dane County, it's because there's usually a coordinated effort that the chief leads. He and his officers lead that they get together and they do usually a targeted enforcement of some sort. It's multiple, 12, 15 jurisdictions, Chief, I think?
Air support helicopter.
Yeah, so they bring in special resources and it's, so it's really, really a great initiative that I think that that kind of leads to, at least the one instance I think was very much well utilized. All those resources were a good thing we had them. But I think I don't, I want to make sure that the chief gets credit for helping coordinate that. Obviously, Dane County's a good partner with that, but all the neighboring, other neighboring jurisdictions that partner with us to do those things. But I think that happens because of this gentleman sitting here. So, so credit, credit to the department and for leading those efforts. I think it's a, a, a proud thing that we can really kind of hang our hat on in terms of leadership in the county. So, so kudos to the chief and his guys for doing that effort.
You empower me to do these things, so thank you.
I actually have a question about, I want to go back to all the kudos that you are receiving.
Yeah.
Do you like, do you like hang on to them all in, in the files somewhere or something?
You know, to look at during dark days. So behind me, the cards I get, I keep.
Yeah.
So I've got a whole slew of cards behind me and a lot of these are just people stopping by.
Yep.
We get a lot of walk-ins, we get a lot of phone calls. You know, and it's, I, by far more of those than, than we do of the, you know, the folks who are critical or just, you know, just not sure what happened or completely disagree with some of the tactics that we use. And so I keep as much as I can.
Okay. I, I wasn't necessarily thinking of it in terms of dark days. I was actually, I mean, although that's certainly maybe, maybe helpful, but I, but I was thinking about it actually in terms of our upcoming campaign.
Yeah.
And thinking, gee, I wonder if there's any notes in there, you know, or really powerful expressions of gratitude about our public safety from either the fire department or the police department that might be part.
No, we should keep that in mind.
Absolutely.
Might be part of the campaign. Because obviously those sorts of things from residents as opposed to from us.
We get, thank you all. Absolutely. We get far more from the community engagement that we do. This officer going to show Jaco to wonderful kids and fire department stopping up. We get much more, many more kudos and thank yous and it was great that I tried to put in personnel files for that sort of thing than we do any of these high-risk stops or these, these pursuits, which I, I think are, in my mind, probably more valuable in terms of the impact that we're making and the trust that we're building with the community. And I'll just, let me just say a point about the Milwaukee Street incident in the city of Madison. Because I'm not sure, you know, you do these 20-minute media interviews and they capture 10 but, 10 seconds of soundbite. You know, I'm not, I'm not going to blame the editors or reporters, but it, you know, they can turn a story into something else.
Somehow it always seems to be misinterpreted a little bit.
Yes, I think I'm what soundbite they use. We had a lot of overwhelming support by a lot of the residents that were quite frustrated that, that lived in that area and in that apartment complex. And if you're not familiar, it's been an apartment complex that the city of Madison has been addressing for some time. They're under nuisance abatement. But as much as what the social media and TikTok and others are showing from when the pursuit ended and individuals helping the suspect get into the building, we had just as much, if not more, support from residents thanking us for being out there and acknowledging it was Manona PD. And that is what the, the streets are sort of talking, if I can use that term, about the work that Manona is doing. And the residents out there knew, oh, it's Manona PD. Y'all ain't going, y'all ain't leaving. You guys are going to hold this person accountable. They use another term for that, but in essence, that's what they were, that they were expressing. And I say they because it was, it was, I was approached by several people wanting to express their gratitude and offer water.
Chief, how did the fundraisers go recently? There were some for Jaco, right? The K9, yeah.
K9 fundraisers, yeah. We did well for, I, I talked about the car show before.
Yep.
But the K9.
But there was a second one.
The K9 golf outing went really well and then the, there was a dog walk.
Right, the dog walk, that's what I'm thinking, yeah.
And I'm not quite sure if we're going to do it at the same time of year, next year. I had fun being there. I, Andrew had fun being there and I actually won something from the raffle. But I think what, what it did was that we were able to interact with people that hadn't met Jaco or who didn't know necessarily about our program that did show up. We actually had a, the, the fire chief and I and the fire crew and PD, we teamed up with Precision again. We hosted a lot of our K9 fundraisers. And I was a Precision tow truck driver for Halloween. Thank you. But part of that's a thank you, because people often forget about the service they provide us in keeping roads safe and clearing up the roads. And the amount of crashes we go to on the Belt Line and their act, they respond so quickly and safely and get that cars out of the way. And they don't charge any of you all, us, for the vehicles, city vehicles that need to be towed. They charge you, the city, zero dollars for all those wonderful hybrids that we, we have to tow from time to time. So it was, it was, it was good to see about 75 kids show up on a very cold Halloween day to City Hall lot and have that interaction with us. And a lot of that is, you know, the work that the officers are doing is promote these things and Jaco is more famous than I at this point, so, which is okay.
Yeah, that's okay, yeah.
No, but it, it was good. Well attended. We probably raised between all three 25?
Yeah, I don't hold you to it, definitely.
$25,000.
$25,000.
Between all three of the fundraisers that we held for K9 this last half of the year.
And how much are you hoping to raise?
Just about that, yeah. The goal is to get a second dog. I think we talked about that here before.
Yeah.
And so the dog and the trainer and all that training is about $20,000 just to get that rolling. Can't have Jaco have all the fun.
Yeah. No, that's, it's absolutely a magnificent animal. I just was so fortunate to get a little personalized, you know, demo sometime ago. And I remember the officer said, this is one of the few weapons we have that after we deploy it, we can, we can call it off. That was such an interesting thing that just stuck in my head, you know, like.
Absolutely. So thank you all.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you meet Jaco, just don't run away real fast.
Yeah.
It's not advisable, yeah.
City clerk, do you have any news?
No report.
Although, will, will you be putting together packets for nomination papers? You're announcing that next time?
They'll be available after the next meeting.
Okay.
Canada packets.
City administrator?
Just want to let everybody know, we have created and launched a City Hall Facebook page. Kind of meant to be kind of a, a collection of all the other department pages in one spot. For the most part, we can solely also do, share from some of our other partners as well. So if you have ideas or you want things out there, or you have questions on that, please let me know. Please share that with everybody. It is up and live and Mr. Nemo and I are the two administrators of that page at this point. So we'll probably expand that as we go. But now, again, so this gives residents the option of either, if they're interested in just following PD, they can just follow PD. Or if they want to kind of have all cities, you know, kind of main events and topics come up in one spot, they can follow the City Hall page, so. So, so far, so good. But if you have any ideas or questions, please let me know.
Neil, what I, what I found is when I was just searching on Facebook, I, I had to search for city of Manona, Wisconsin. By adding the state, it did help because there is a Manona, Iowa out there, so, yeah, anyway.
Yeah, that's why we actually added the Wisconsin actually onto it, yep.
Anyone else have anything? All right. Well, we got one budget down and one to go. There are no appointments tonight. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.